We will go ahead with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, the next item on tonight's agenda is our program review. We have Mr. Hinker here from the elementary school. We do not have a smiling group of second graders reading to us, unfortunately for I Love To Read Month, but I guess Greg, you're a close second in terms of favorite.
Well, I knew that video and pictures and participation were going to be a must. I was going to share a PowerPoint. It's saying that the host disabled participant screen sharing. Is there someone that would allow me to share my screen?
Hang on here, Greg, I'll be right there.
Nope, no problem. Well, as Matt's making those final adjustments, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's good to see you all this evening. I made an effort to find lots of pictures and a few videos that I could throw in to show you some of the beautiful faces at the elementary school.
I think you should be able to share now, Greg.
Let's try that.
Greg, I can have Lydia run down to your house and read something if you'd like.
Send her on down. I need all the help I can get over here. Alright. Alright, so I thought I would just update the board on some of the events, some of the happenings that are going on at the elementary school up to this point in the school year. But then I'd also give you a brief update on our strategic plan, considering we just passed the mid-year points, kind of give you an update on some of those goals that we established for the year. So one of the things I'll start with is just a learning model. For those that are not aware, the elementary school, we have been in person since January 19th. We're very, very fortunate. We only had three and a half weeks where our students were in the hybrid model. It was a short time, but it's a very challenging mode for our elementary students and it ends up really just slowing down the progress of our students because so much of what they do is dependent upon them being in the elementary school. Also like to report that the COVID activity in the elementary school is actually extremely low at this point. Going into last week, we had quite a period of time where we had zero positive cases in the elementary school and we had zero students that were on quarantine. So that is a pretty incredible feat. Next piece that we have is our staff are participating with our district nurse and our building nurse doing optional staff testing. We have that sometimes bi-weekly, sometimes weekly. And also, we have the vaccination program that our teachers are participating. It started off led by the district and now it's being run by Wright County. And I know just hearing through conversations with our staff, once we get past this Thursday, there was a number of staff that were scheduled to be vaccinated on Thursday. That was rescheduled because of the storms in the south, but now we're going to have a pretty sizable chunk of our elementary teachers will be vaccinated coming up by the end of this week for their first round. Just to speak to some of the mitigation strategies that we have in place at the elementary that have really helped with keeping our students and our staff safe and healthy. We have some pictures of our kids in the lunchroom. We've got signage around the building to keep our kids socially distanced, whether it's in the lunchroom. You see some spots on the floor. The kids are doing some alternate seating. The picture on the right would be our kids in the media center. They have spots, so after they check out their book, they sit on one of the spots so that way they have their separation. And our kids really have been super fantastic with wearing their masks. Very, very few, very few issues with students and most of the time, it's just a quick reminder and those kids are back with their masks out. Some other things that we have, we have a staggered schedule. The two pictures on the left there doesn't look like anything exciting, but that picture was taken at 12 o'clock and last year at that time, that same intersection by the cafeteria in the gym would have had close to 300 students go in the hallway at the same time between 150 students leaving the lunchroom, about 75 leaving specialist and another 75 going to specialist. So by staggering, our schedule can really cut down the traffic. And that's one of those things that we'll probably never go back to a non-staggered schedule. And then we have a picture of our cafeteria with all those smiling faces, but the kids are sitting in alternate seats there too. And the kids are always assigned to specific tables, so that way Ms. Kurth's second grade class, they always sit together. A little update, this is one of our distance learning groups. This is our first grade group. We still have four groups of students that are meeting every day with our four distance learning teachers. And those groups have shrunk a little bit. Around the semester time, at the end of January, beginning of February, we put out a questionnaire to our parents and students that wanted to come back were allowed to have the chance to come back. If they still want to come back, that would be fine too. There's been a slow trickle, but in that picture, I think there are 14 students and that group has come down to eight or so. Great to have the students in the building, but still, we have some families that are definitely excited to have the opportunity to be distance learning with their kiddos at home. This is another picture. This is our second grade group. And another one of the neat things about having our distance learning group is that when families or students end up having to be quarantined, those students were able to switch those kids over in about 24 hours. So the students never missed them more than a day of school and they're able to keep up with their education with the distance learning teacher. The distance learning teacher and the classroom teachers are all teaching the same lessons each day, so the students really never miss out on much. One of the interesting things that we did at the mid-year is we did our fast testing of all of our students and our distance learning group is doing really, really well. I think as you can expect, they're just a smidge behind their in-person cohort, but there are actually two of the four groups that are outperforming their in-person counterpart. So that's kind of cool. So those kids are at home, working hard and making the best of things. And I think that's also a testament to our talented distance learning teacher. They've been really doing an outstanding job. Okay. So I'll queue up. We have a video. This is Ms. Goudy, one of our first grade teachers, and she is taping the end of one of her lessons. So she's giving, the kids are going to do a farewell, and this is about the cutest thing that you can imagine. So I'll go ahead and play this video for you guys.
Okay, we don't have, we don't have audio on it.
I don't know if you can.
Oh, it's not audio?
Hang on a minute. Jackson, anything we need to do on our end? Okay.
Did the audio not work?
No, it didn't.
Greg, usually when you go to share your screen, there's a thing that says share with audio.
Here, let's see if I can pull that share. Right there. Well, let's try that again. So this is Ms. Goudy and our first grade distance learning group.
Half lesson, so I thought saying so long mathematicians all at the same time. Are you ready? I'm going to count to three. Get your mouse ready. One. Does everyone remember what you're going to say? Alright, ready. One, two, three. Half lesson, so I thought.
Once was enough.
Half lesson, so I thought.
Alright, so another big event at the elementary school is in the month of February. We celebrate our I Love To Read Month, and this year, we have the Team Hinker versus Team Ludwig Reading Challenge. We kicked off the month with a school-wide reading time. Kids got to wear their pajamas, flashlights, and we did a school-wide building, our school-wide reading time. Each Thursday, the kids have a different dress-up day. So last Thursday was beach day. You see some of our students and our teachers getting into the spirit. And then at the end of the month, we're going to have our reading carnival. The picture over there with these students, that's from our reading carnival a couple of years ago. So we'll set that up in the gym and we had to take some extra precautions. This year, we're still going to have the reading carnival, but it's only going to be one group of students at a time rather than an entire grade level. And then this year, the kids are entering their names into a drawing and at the end of the month, we're going to have a raffle where we're going to have one girl and one boy winner are going to be taking home a brand-new bicycle.
That's awesome.
Yes. And this is, this next section is just an update on our benchmark literacy. Last year, we implemented a new reading curriculum called Benchmark Literacy. It's been fabulous. Our teachers love it and the things that the students are doing are pretty phenomenal. One of the interesting things about it is theme-based, and the theme is the same across the entire building. So right now, everybody is working on a technology and invention unit, which kind of worked out pretty nice with the Mars rover landing. But going across the entire building, you see similar things that are happening. And then another interesting piece about the curriculum is most of it is consumable, meaning we no longer have those basal readers where students have to keep them in pristine condition because they have to last an entire decade. Well, the books only have to last about two or three weeks and then they get a new book. It's theme-based and the student can really do a lot of working and writing in those books. They do a lot of annotating, reading passages multiple times. On the, also coming with that curriculum, on the student's side, there is a digital piece where the students have access to some of the work online, some of their tests are online, and then there's a whole catalog of stories that the students can listen to and can mark up and annotate as well. The teachers have a version of the text that they can display on their clever touchboard, so whatever the students are doing in their books, the teachers can model on the front or at the front of the room. Here on the left side, we have one of our kindergarten teachers. Each one of the stories comes with one of those oversized storybooks, so the students can have those jumbo books that they can follow along with, which is kind of best practice for literacy instruction. And then on the right, we have one of our kindergarten teachers is doing guided reading. And the curriculum comes with a variety of levels, so the students, when they're at the guiding reading table, earlier in the day, they got grade-level instruction and then when they meet at the table, they are meeting at more of individual levels, so that way everyone is kind of progressing along at their level and working on their skills. Another interesting part with this is with the Benchmark Literacy, it has a heavy emphasis on one of the components that our old curriculum was not strong in. That's the phonics and phonemic awareness. So phonics has to do with those letter chunks, those letter parts, and how we put them together with prefixes and suffixes and things like that, and working towards students sounding out words. Well, phonemic awareness is teaching the students to actually hear those sounds. So there is a big, heavy emphasis in kindergarten and in first grade where we're teaching the students to hear the different sounds in the words and manipulate those sounds. And then later, as they go into first grade, they figure out which letters represent those sounds. So that is an added bonus with this new curriculum. So that's one of our kindergarten teachers working on those letter sounds. Kids are heavily routine-based, but they're really working on their letter sounds. In one last section as an update would be second step. With our CARES dollars at the beginning of the school year, the district was able to purchase a social-emotional curriculum at grades, preschool through fifth grade. So we got those in the month of January. Our teachers are unpacking those and starting to teach it. So there is a second step, just like a general curriculum, but it also came with a bully prevention unit and a child protection unit. So we're looking to start using those with our students this year. I know the preschool teachers down at TKC or down at the Early Childhood Building, they're starting to use it. And then all the way through the fifth grade teachers at the intermediate school, they're starting to use that curriculum as well. So before I move into kind of the dry, boring part of the presentation, does anyone have any questions about kind of the business at the elementary school up to this point? Our site improvement plan typically falls into those five areas, but I think you saw at the beginning of the school year that we focused a lot of our attention on surviving the COVID pandemic and just kind of getting through the nuts and bolts and everything, all of the curveballs that have been thrown our way. So one of the main areas that we watch would be the student achievement. When we did our testing at the fall of the year, what we noticed is that the average and the median score of our students was about six to eight points lower than what it was last year at that time. So that was a sizable dip, but not as, I guess, not as big as what I thought it was going to be. But then moving into the winter, that average score ends up only being four to six points less. So what I'm seeing is while the gap was greater at the beginning of the year, as the school year is going along and as we're using our interventions and teachers have more time with their students, that gap is slowly closing. And part of the Fast Bridge, part of their tools is it does some predicting for the end of the school year. And I guess I'm not going to put a ton of weight on this, but a positive light that we have is that they're predicting our average and our median scores will be close to what it has been historically. So I think we are closing the gap and if things keep going well, the gap, it won't be as dramatic of a decline as what we thought it would be. Just to highlight some of the few other things for those other areas of our site improvement plan, we've got a great system, as I mentioned earlier, for transitioning our distance learning students in and out of the distance learning group. So if there's a student that's quarantined, we have kids that are not missing much school. We do weekly communication with our parents and it's great to see that the parents read that. So when I update something on a Friday about traffic, about pickup, you see a huge difference already on that very next day of school. So really appreciate our parents watching that communication closely and making the adjustments to make sure that things are going smoothly. And we did have a short period of time where we were in hybrid, where we had some of our students doing distance learning. In the fall, we made sure that we practiced a lot of those routines with the students in the building. So when we moved to distance learning, it wasn't that big of a shock for students. They were pretty familiar with all of their passwords and login names and things like that. And the end of the first semester was at the beginning of February. We implemented a new standards-based report card. Teachers had a lot of conversations with parents at the conferences in early February. And then having to do with technology, we had our students were prepared to work remotely. So when we were in hybrid, the students were all set to go. And we have one-to-one Chromebooks, so all of our students were able to participate equally online. And then just that last piece is, again, just talking about the signage and the schedules and things like that. So we have a number of things in place to make sure that our processes and procedures are running smoothly around the building. So that is an update. Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask?
I think so. It was great. It was good to see some of the pictures and the videos of what's going on in the schools. We don't get to see that very often, so thanks for sharing that stuff.
Yeah. It's not the same as having the kids in the boardroom, so maybe next year, right?
Alright, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda then, which is our consent agenda. Consists of the normal past minutes as well as financial affairs, all linked within the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Jenny can make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Rachel. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Girkey?
Aye.
Ms. Roser?
Aye.
Ms. Deppa?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Rosnell?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Segwin?
Aye. Alright, consent agenda passed. Next item on the agenda is the resolution for acceptance of gifts. Pretty short tonight. I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas US Bank, $231 for Delano Elementary, Target, $22 for Delano Elementary, DES Pi, $7,500 for elementary school teacher supplies, DES Pi, $6,400 for elementary technology, Durex, $30 for Delano High School, Ohio Pile Prince, $33.65 for Delano High School, Wells Fargo, $35 for Delano High School, Delano Tiger Athletic Booster Club, $4,770.37 for boys hockey booster, paid coach, and Delano Lions, $500 for NHS fire baskets. Conditions on these gifts, programs noted above. So I have a motion to approve tonight's this resolution.
Sue will motion.
I'll go ahead and second. Sorry. Motion by Sue, second by Lisa. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Black?
Did you hear him?
Yep, Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Deppa?
Aye.
Ms. Roser?
Aye.
Mr. Girkey?
Aye.
Ms. Segwin?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
And Ms. Rosnell?
Aye.
Alright, that resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is our personnel matters. Linked within the agenda. Fairly short tonight, but everyone can review those items on tonight's agenda. So I have a motion to approve tonight's personnel matters.
I'll make the motion.
I'll go ahead and second. Motion by Amy, second by Lisa. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Deppa?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Rosnell?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye. Did I freeze? I thought I said I.
No, I think you did.
Oh, okay.
Can you all hear me? There was some playback going on there.
Oh, yeah, now I can hear you again.
Okay, I'm going to restart here. Ms. Deppa?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Rosnell?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Girkey?
Aye.
Ms. Roser?
Aye.
Alright, personnel matter passes. Next item on tonight's agenda is our public comment. School patrons are given the opportunity to address the school board regarding items on the agenda. Patrons will be asked to state name and address for the record. While the board appreciates feedback from the public in this forum, board members will not comment on or discuss topics brought up by speakers at this time. Is there anyone at City Hall tonight?
No.
Paul, did anybody email in?
No, we did not get any email comments.
Okay. And we will go on and move to the next item on the agenda, which is our administrative report, starting with Superintendent Shane.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board and student school board representatives. If you do not know, today is the beginning of School Board Appreciation Week. So I would like to formally appreciate all of you publicly and the work that you do. I traditionally have handed out a certificate of appreciation that's signed off by the Minnesota School Boards Association, and I will be giving that to you, to those folks that are not physically present here in city chambers. Basically, again, and I want to make sure that the public knows that there's a lot of work that school board members do that is really behind the scenes, tremendous amount of leadership in working with their superintendent. There's a lot of meetings that are attended by board members and various different committees and various different organizations. And your service to this school district should be noted and you should be congratulated for the work that you do. Even as a principal, back in the day when I was a high school principal here and I've been principal at two other districts, I didn't really understand to the level of how much a school board member is involved in the governance of a school district until I became a superintendent. And I can tell you, over the years, this is now my ninth year as the superintendent, I've had a number of school board members that have come and gone. I have a number of school board members that are on this current board that were present when I first became superintendent. And I could tell you that I wouldn't trade the members that have served in their capacity for anybody. Your leadership, your guidance for me and for our district, for our students, for our staff, has been impeccable. And I just wanted to make sure, and recognizing you for this week, it is service that is sometimes unseen. And I want to make sure that the public does know that Delano Public Schools has an outstanding school board and allows us to have an exemplary school district. And that's due to your leadership and the governance position that you're in. I want to thank you all very, very much for that and appreciate you in your work and your role as school board members. Just a few other brief updates. We'll do a virtual applause there. Thank you very much, everybody. Let's give everybody a virtual applause. It obviously has created quite a bit of a situation where this year has been one of those very, very extremely challenging years for obvious reasons. And the work that we're doing together in partnership, all of the special meetings that have had to be held in order to support recommendations that have come forward from the administration, from my office, we are really navigating through this journey well. As all of you know, we're finishing, hopefully, will be our last trans- As all of you know, we're finishing, hopefully, will be our last transition in learning models to get our secondary building back in person. We will be moving back the next three grade levels, starting next week, back in person. We're paying very, very close attention to our safety measures because we know that the more the students are in the building, the more we have to continue to be diligent and careful and making sure that we continue to provide a safe learning environment. So, that's all that I have this evening. I know I usually make my comments brief at the February school board meeting in recognizing school board members, but we're doing good, we're doing well for the school year, and we're in great hands with the school board.
Thank you, Matt. All right, let's move on to the update from our principals then. We'll start with the intermediate school principal, Mr. Vio.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and thank you for the opportunity to be with you. Just from the intermediate school, I can say it's great to have all of the kids back. We are now back full-time with our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, so it's just fantastic to have all the kids back. We're also happy to be outside for recess after that cold spell and that cold snap, and we were inside for about a week and a half. It's been very, very nice to get our kids back outside and burning off some energy out there as well. Some of the updates from last month, obviously, since last month, our report cards are out and we had conferences. And I would say, overall, I had a lot of success with the conferences. Many of our teachers were able to meet with about half or better of their classrooms, and so that went very well. As we're back in, and high school is now back in session, and all the drivers for high school, when high school is on campus, all the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders are on site, and that's creating some traffic issues. And we're still monitoring our traffic patterns and looking for ways for more efficiencies. What I can say is, even today with... So it's gotten a little bit better each and every single day. And I believe by about 3 o'clock, all the kids were picked up and out of the intermediate school parking lot. So, when the kids are getting out at 2:45 and the last car is out of the lot with their kid picked up by 3:15, now all in all, that's not too bad of a scenario for our kids and for our parents. So it's not too long of a wait. We are beginning now to take a look at planning for our MCAs coming up. So just as to keep the board informed, the MCAs, we will now be able to test our students who are distance learning at home. So we're going to be sending out notifications to the parents of distance learners to see if they're going to be testing and how we're gonna... And then start making arrangements for how that might look once we have to bring them onto campus and have them test for the MCAs. So, we'll be bringing that to the parents here in the next week or so, or the next couple of weeks. And then, we'll be looking, figure out which of our kids are gonna be coming in that are now on distance learning to take the MCAs. We have a book fair that started in the intermediate school today. It's going on now through March 5th. We're doing a lot of that virtual and with virtual currency now for the first time. So I think there's some exciting news in changing that up. And we'll see how that goes and see if we're anywhere close to where we've been with a lot of our other book fairs in the past. Also, February is I Love to Read Month, as Greg, Mr. Hinker explained, but it's also Black History Month. And it's been great to tour the building and kind of take a look and see all the different biographies that the students are doing of African-Americans that have been handed down through history and that have landmark items attached to their names. So it's been fun to see our kids doing that research and displaying that out in the hallway. I did want to just kind of go over some things. I know Greg mentioned some things about the fast scores. And I did a little bit of digging with our scores as well. And what I tried to do is, what I actually did is say, all right, if our third graders, last year, the fall and the winter scores were under normal circumstances, so now they're fourth graders, where were they and where did they fall? And what I can tell you, and so then I did that for last year's fourth graders, which are now this year's fifth graders. And then last year's fifth graders, which are now this year's sixth graders. When you take a look at the AMATH and the A-reading average of the entire grade last fall... So just as an example, so hopefully you can follow this. Last fall, the third grade was 207 for AMATH, 210. And then this fall, that same cohort in fourth grade was 213 to 217. So if you look at that, there was no quote-unquote "real regression", even though the kids were out of school from March 6th through to September. Actually, they went, their scores improved from 210 to 213, which is very interesting. That happened in like four out of the five, or excuse me, five out of the six categories when you take all three grades for math and for reading. So our kids actually have progressed pretty darn well. They're either matching or exceeding where they were last year in the winter. So that growth is continuing to go, which is really encouraging to see. Additionally, the fall-to-winter growth, we've met that with that same cohort of kids. We've either matched that or exceeded that in five out of the six categories. So again, really encouraging signs that the kids' regression hasn't been terribly, terribly painful as we've gone through this whole crazy scenario here in the last year or so. So I thought that was actually very, very encouraging news. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I think that is encouraging. And with that, I will entertain any questions the board might have.
Joe, can you explain to me a little more? So, we're talking growth from last fall to this fall. What is the average yearly growth that we would see in a normal year?
That does vary a little bit by grade level, in most cases, and it varies by, and the subject. So like, for example, in math, we probably expect to see a five to six point, or a six to seven point growth in each of the grade levels. And in reading, we might expect to see a seven to 10 point, depending upon which grade you're looking at. And that's kind of what Greg was talking about when he says those are our target scores, and so we can, that's what we want to shoot for as a grade level.
Do we have numbers, how many kids declined to the point of needing intervention that maybe didn't need it before?
Like, that I don't have off the top of my head, because I didn't need it before. What, when we've gone through our student success team process, it seems like many of those names were very familiar. In other words, we had been working and servicing those kids. So the numbers of them would be probably very few that were new to the system.
Thank you, Joe. Does anyone else have any other questions for Joe?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we'll hear from Delano High School principal, Mr. Barry Voight.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm joining you virtually this evening because we have conferences at the high school. Those, of course, are virtual, so it's actually pretty lonely around here. But at least it's quiet, I should say. It's not, there's quite a few teachers still in the building, of course, facilitating their virtual appointments, but it is certainly more quiet than... A few announcements with respect to the high school. We are, I would say, 98% complete with registration. There's still a handful of students who need to get some course requests in for next school year. So at this point in time, we have shared those initial request numbers with our department chairs, and we're gonna start the process here in the next week or so, whittling down the decision-making process of which sections are offered, the numbers of sections for each different portion of those sort of things, which will then lead directly into the master scheduling process. We do have the ACT being offered on March 3rd. So it's gonna be kind of an important day, obviously, for many of our juniors and seniors. We'll be doing that online this year. They will be in-person, but online on March 3rd. I know Mr. Shane has already mentioned in work session and other times that our 7th through 9th graders will be returning on Monday. Obviously, our 10th through 12th graders returned last week, and it was just a joy to have another sort of level of energy in the building. So it's been great to have those kids back, and we're looking forward to expanding that with our 7th through 9th graders on Monday. Wanted to provide a couple of other items that planning is in the works. I don't have a tremendous amount of details to offer at this point, but prom planning is in the works, as well as summer school or summer programming. Those are just under sort of the initial planning stages, if you will. We have a long way to go for both of those. And I know Mr. Vio, he already mentioned the traffic. And so my encouragement is just for everyone to be patient and specifically for our high school students to leave earlier. Obviously, we are hoping that as time goes on, people will adjust to the flow of traffic and then the needs of our traffic on campus, but encourage specifically those high school students to leave earlier. And the last thing that I wanted to update everyone on is our student handbook. Believe it or not, it's, it might create a little bit of anxiety knowing that we're preparing our student handbook for your review. I mean, not for a couple of months down the road, of course, but it's important for us to begin the conversations now, not only with our staff this year, but we're incorporating the students' perspective as we review our student handbook. So, we have tasked our student council with reviewing the student handbook and offering their feedback. We're actually bringing them into our site-based leadership conversations, both the month of March and April, so that we can take into consideration their viewpoints as we're adjusting, you know, some of the practices in the high school. So I'm looking forward to hearing what they have to say and discussing their feedback with them, and then obviously sharing that with you at some point here in the spring. So with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has about the high school.
No questions for me. Thank you, Mr. Voight. And next up, we'll hear from the elementary school principal, Mr. Hinker.
I don't have any other additional updates. Had quite a lot to say at the first part of the meeting. We'll keep things moving.
Sounds good, thank you, Greg. All right, then the next item on the agenda is to hear from Business Manager, Mary Reader.
Just a few things. We are in the midst of looking at the $500,000 in budget reductions that we'll be doing for the 21-22 school year, as well as doing some major revisions in Fund IV, which is community ed and food service for the current school year. Things are still a little bit up in the air in there. We're gonna see, now that kids are back, especially for food service, if that's gonna increase our numbers and hopefully get that fund balance into a little better position. We will be working on the FY22 budget as well, so we'll be bringing that to the board for preliminary review at the April meeting, and then it will be finalized at the June meeting. Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Next up is Diane Johnson, Community Education Director.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to update you. We are exploring our options for doing some sort of print program brochure for summer, as long as we can do it in a very economical manner because of our budget constraints right now. In the meantime, we're continuing to announce new classes in a four- to six-week timeframe, and that seems to be working out for us now. ECFE, I mentioned last month, they have these monthly take-home subscription bags. And to encourage more people to take a boost, they have dropped that to $10 per month. They come in two different age ranges, and they give families everything that they need to do to complete a variety of activities at home with their child. So for the families who aren't yet comfortable coming in for classes in person, that's an option that we encourage them to explore. Cabin Fever Open Gym, especially with the cold spell we've had, has been very popular, allowing families to get their little ones out and let them run around in the gym and burn off some energy. We added the Monday night option for that, and of course, we have the Friday morning. We are ending up being wait-listed for those because, of course, with social distancing, we have capacity limitations. Our Coffee Connection classes started for parents, kind of a parent support group, for parents of children of multiple ages, not just pre-K age children. That started back up this past Friday. And we still have a few spots left on that, so if anyone's interested in learning more, we encourage them to give us a call. We moved our Free Baby and Me class to Wednesday, just due to how scheduling was going with other classes that are running right now. So we're feeling pretty good about ECFE. In preschool, Greg kind of took a part of my report away from me here. We did get our second step, social-emotional learning curriculum. And during last week's PD Day, we had the staff do the online training that they could do for that. And so we're starting to implement that now for the balance of the school year. Registration for next year's preschool opens at midnight tonight, or maybe 12:01, but that, we're opening that up tonight. Tiger Kids Club, for current families, is opening registration for both summer and school year at midnight. And then, new families can register beginning of March 9th. Using Richmond, people are craving getting their kids back into activities. We had a couple of in-person art classes, which were both full and I believe wait-listed. We've got a couple more coming up that we've got strong registration numbers for already. So it's good to see, you know, people coming back and wanting to participate. Working on planning our summer programs across all of the things that we do. And at the Activity Center, especially again with the cold spell, we've stayed busy with people coming in, daily passes, as well as our normal members coming in, continuing to use signup genius for people to sign up for their times to use the weight room, the circuit room, the track, or early morning lap swim. March is gonna be pretty heavy with weekend tournaments across a multitude of sports. And as a sign that warmer weather is coming, Delano Youth Baseball Softball Association has scheduled their clinics into the TAC and their tryouts for summer. So, we're looking forward to warm weather and hopefully a very busy and successful summer. Does anyone have any questions?
None for me, thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we'll hear from our student school board representatives.
Hello, everybody. I'm gonna be presenting my screen, actually. It's a little bit of a makeshift presentation going on here in an Excel spreadsheet. Just so everybody is aware, hold on, trying to switch to the right screen here. Can everybody see what's going on on my screen?
Yeah, we see it.
Yep.
Perfect. Just so nobody's confused, it is organized into columns. So we kind of got the second grade going down, and there'll be different rows where you can see each question. And I'll let Bridget take it from here.
Um, John, is there any way you can bring it out so that you see all five in the first row?
There's not. So right as we're going along, I'll just kind of scroll it along.
Okay, yep, that's fine. Um, so the first question that we asked, we asked second and third graders one question, and then we asked fourth, or no, we asked second, third, fourth graders the same survey. And then, fifth and sixth graders was a little bit different. And then, seventh through 12th was all the same, but a little bit different than the rest of the surveys. So the first question that we asked was, on a scale of 1 to 5, how much do you like wearing your mask? And obviously, we were expecting the same thing. And obviously, kids do not like wearing masks. But we've heard that generally, kids are pretty neutral about it because they've gotten so used to it. So the only time was second grade, was when they were, there were more neutrals than dislikes. But overall, kids seem just across the board, not liking them, but it's not... There's a lot of neutrals, too. So then, the second question was, on a scale of 1 to 5, how much do you like being in school when you learn? And in the elementary school, kids very clearly prefer being in school. But as we look at the intermediate... prefer being in school. But as we look at the intermediate school, which is the three to the right, you'll notice that it's not as drastic, so there are more kids who also enjoy learning at home too, which was kind of interesting. We noticed that for the comments underneath, a lot of the younger kids like being at home so that they can be with their siblings and with their moms, and they can eat more often, and they don't have to be in lines, was a comment that we got. So that, those were just trends that we noticed in terms of kindergarten through fourth, or third.
Yes, so our third question is just a little bit different than the second. It's, on a scale of one to five, how much do you like being at home when you learn? So in the second grade, you can kind of see, it's pretty either five or one. It's pretty kind of a, it's either one or the other. But as we go along, we can kind of see the trend starts to go down in the bar graphs, and you can kind of look at comparative with the percentages in the pie graphs, and it starts to go down as you go up into the higher grades. Something interesting happens as you get up into the higher grades. The trend actually plateaus in the fifth grade and reverses and starts going up in the sixth grade. So, and, and it's, the percentages are pretty, pretty big groups of five or ones, but here it's getting pretty even in each category, with it starting to go up in the, they like being at home. Something to note, though, is we actually had two questions after this question that were just kind of like, what are your thoughts on being at home? Or it, the actual questions for the second through fourth grade was, what do you like about being in school? And the other one was, what do you like about being at home? And, you know, a lot of kids, they're like, I love seeing my friends, I love gym, I love recess, things like that. A lot of kids like being at home because they like sleeping in, they relax in between periods, seeing their family is always nice. So, some of those things. And we have our seven through twelve in the process of being counted, and it's, a lot of the answers are the same for why they like being at home compared to in person. And something really interesting on that note is that kids recognize that they learn better in school. It's the conveniency of being at home that they like a lot, which is why you start to see this trend going up in the higher grades. So me and Bridget talked a little bit about the seven and twelve, and she can kind of give you a little bit of an update, but we won't have the full graphs and everything probably until our next meeting, so we'll, we have, we have two more questions. That'll be really interesting to show you guys. How prepared are you for tests when you're in person or at home? And have you cheated on any tests at home? So we have some pretty interesting results on that. So kind of ending it on a cliffhanger, so I'll let Bridget talk now.
Um, so yeah, as John said, we don't have like the whole idea of seven through twelve, but just some obvious things that we saw right off the bat was, there was quite a drastic difference in between seventh graders and seniors in terms of cheating on tests. There was a much more cheating in upperclassmen grades, tenth, eleventh, twelfth versus seventh, eighth, ninth. And something that we also noticed was that there were very polarized opinions as kids got older. So there's either, kids got actually very descriptive in what they were talking about below, and some were saying, you know, I don't like being in school because there are so many kids that don't properly wear their masks, and there were some people that went on rants about how like masks are stupid. So there was, it was very halved, and there wasn't very much neutral in terms of a lot of opinions. And um, that, those were some of the things that we saw. So it'll be more interesting when we have graphs next month, but um, yeah, that's just an idea. Any questions?
Put some different two numbers.
None for me. Thanks, guys.
I think it would be great, John and Bridget, if you could, once you have it to where you want it, as far as organized information and, and seeing the, the feedback here. It'd be great to share with us as administrators, superintendents, and principals, just another piece of information for us to, to look through and think through and, and chat with you as well. So if you, if you don't mind, if you wouldn't mind sharing that information, that would be great, but I want to let you get it to where you like it and where it's organized the way you want it.
Sounds good.
Thanks, guys. All right, we'll move on. The next item on our agenda is our board reports, starting with Masico.
Yes, Masico met last month. It was actually the organizational meeting, so we did the normal housekeeping, elected officers, et cetera. But then we also had our, our normal January meeting, the director report from Janelle. We talked through December one child count data and that being available, and, and tomorrow when we meet, we'll go over that in depth. Federal allocations have been sent to the districts, and basically, she just shared with the board, highlighted the January eighteenth In-service Day was going to cover emergency closer, closure procedures, district office, the district office restructure, and then just give general program updates. The business manager report, Scott shared with the board that he's starting to meet monthly now with the business managers, district business managers, and they talked through the FY twenty-one federal allocations. And then finally, just shared an update on the CARES Act funds that we've received and what we've spent year to date. So, there you go.
Thanks, you.
Yep.
Right Tech Center.
Uh, Right Tech was also their organizational meeting, so the chair and vice chair and treasury and everything were voted on, and then smaller committees were also appointed, and they also went through some emergency calls with the clinic being basically a block away from the Right Tech Center, so that was important. A lot of facility, facility needs and discussions, but yeah, that's, that's about it.
Okay. Rational Development?
Yes, so we, two things that I'd like to update on. First is that we are, the team is looking for a literacy consultant because Bonnie Howe has left for another position. So there are two that they are currently looking at and reviewing. And then, secondly, they passed a motion graciously giving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of their professional development dollars to the general fund. But just wanted to reiterate again that, you know, this is money that they use, obviously, towards their development and, and different classes, and that they didn't want it to be, you know, a habit. And so there was a lot of discussion around it, but again, that motion was passed. And that was it.
Thank you. Schools for Equity in Education?
Schools for Equity met. We had Representative Davney, who heads the House Committee on Education. I just moved my notes, sorry about that. And he talked about his legislative priorities, which were centered around COVID, increasing teachers of color in the classroom, and closing educational disparities. There was some talk about the budget and what school funding will look like will largely depend on how that looks. They also brought in Kim Gibbons from the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvements. She discussed learning in the pandemic, summer slide versus summer slowdown, COVID slide, which estimates that students would return in the fall of 2020 with seventy percent of the learning gains in reading compared to a typical school year. And for math, they projected less than fifty percent of learning gains in some grades. It others projected students could be coming back at least a full year behind. They talked about the need for assessments and ensuring that when we're assessing students, that we're doing it for purposefully and that we're meeting the needs of the students. And then they just did the regular business portion.
Okay, thank you.
And then I have Safe Schools as well, if you want me to go right over to that.
Go ahead.
Um, Safe Schools met, and we actually met the day after the Alina Clinic shooting. And so you can guess, that was a big part of what was done. And I took a quote out of there that I thought was kind of important. Officer Krail said, directed at Buffalo, he said, you know, the world is watching, and Buffalo did it right, and they did it well. And I think that's a credit to all the officers that were involved, including our own school resource officer who went out there to help when everything happened. And so just acknowledging that they've been through a lot. They moved their COVID clinic. It was supposed to happen the next day. It wasn't an ideal time, obviously. They were busy. They also gave an update from the Highway Department. They talked about the mini roundabout that's coming on the corner of Highway Thirty and Tiger Drive to replace the always stop signs that we have there. And then the schools all gave their reports, working on keeping our kids on track, mental health, things like that. And then our COVID activity was really low. Parents stressed, though. During hybrid was extremely high, and so those are things that, as we get back to full in person, hopefully that'll calm down a little bit. And most of that stress was quarantines and absences, and the stress that puts on the families. The other thing is Chad Miller reported a need for foster homes for older children in the area. So if that's something you're looking into, reach out to Wright County, and they will help you get educated and ready to go. I think that's about it, unless Matt has anything he wants to add.
Oh, you covered it, Rachel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel. All right, let's move on to old business. We've got two items under old business, which are second reads of some policies. So the first item under old business is to approve the second read of policy six oh seven, organization of grade levels due to substantive and legal reference changes. Do I have a motion to approve second read of policy six oh seven?
Deppa can motion.
I'll second. Amy Johnson.
Motion by Deppa, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Segwin?
Aye.
Ms. Bergirke?
Aye.
Ms. Roser?
Aye.
Ms. Deppa?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Rosnell?
Aye.
All right, policy six oh seven is approved. The next item is to approve the second read of policy six oh eight, instructional services, special education due to substantive and legal reference changes. I motion to approve the second read of policy six oh eight.
Jenny will make that motion.
Sue can second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Sue. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Girkey?
Aye.
Ms. Roser?
Aye.
Ms. Deppa?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Rosnell?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
All right, policy six zero eight is approved. Moving on to new business, first item under new business is to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar. We talked about this last month. Matt, do you want to just speak through a little bit about the process to approve this and any major changes or anything about this calendar that you want to talk about?
No, we spent, we had a couple of meetings with the calendar committee. I've shared this out with board members for their feedback. We talked about this at last month's work session. It's very similar to last year's school calendar, so I think the board did not have too much dialogue or feedback one way or the other. The biggest change is the format. So thanks to Paul Downer, we've created a Google Doc that it's color coordinated. It's articulated with each of the days that are marked on a calendar under each of the month, so we think it's a little bit better organized, easier to read, and it's basically, we're going to start after Labor Day, and we're going to end that first week in June with the spring break in there and some winter breaks, and obviously, all of the quarters and, and semesters are articulated there as well, including teacher workshop days and conferences.
Yep, it does look very similar to this year's calendar, so that's good. All right, do I have a motion to approve the calendar for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year?
Jenny will make that motion.
Jim will second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Jim. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Roser?
Aye.
Mr. Girkey?
Aye.
Ms. Segwin?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Rosnell?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Deppa?
Aye.
All right, next year's calendar is approved. Next item is to approve the first and only read of policy six one one, homeschooling, and policy six one two dot one, development of parent and family engagement policies for Title One programs due to non-substantive and or legal reference changes. Matt sent these out last week. They're also linked within. They're non-substantive, so they're fairly minor changes. Do I have a motion to approve these two policies?
Deppa will motion.
Sue can second.
Motion by Rachel, second by Sue. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Girkey?
Aye.
Ms. Segwin?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Rosnell?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Deppa?
Aye.
Ms. Roser?
Aye.
Policies six eleven and six twelve dot one are approved. Next item is to approve the renumbering of policy six thirteen A, national contest, due to policy six twenty-five, national contest. Pretty straightforward. Matt sent this one out ahead as well. Do I have a motion to approve the renumbering of policy six thirteen A to six twenty-five?
I'll make the motion.
I'll go ahead and make it. I'll make the motion. Corey can second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Uh, Mr. Girkey?
Aye.
Ms. Roser?
Aye.
Ms. Deppa?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Ms. Rosnell?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Segwin?
Aye. All right, policy six thirteen is approved. Last item on the agenda. Thanks, everyone. We're adjourned. Have a great evening.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.